All set?
Yep.
All right, we're going to open the Monday, August 3rd, 2020 Groveland Board of Selectment Meeting at 4:30. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have anybody on the Zoom call?
We do not.
All right. First up, we have approve the warrants. Jason, you're going to give it a go.
Absolutely.
All right.
I make a motion to approve payroll warrant 21-05 in the amount of $170,733.78.
Second. The motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right.
I make a motion to approve bill warrant 21-05 in the amount of $1,617,842.43, which breaks down to the town, $261,237.62. Water and sewer, $43,663.3. Payroll withholding, $52,876.57. Light bills, $130,497.55. Grants and revolving, $18,206.25. Pentucket assessments in the amount of $920,855.41. Whittier assessments, $190,506.
Second. The motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Yes. All right, thank you. Next up, we have appointments. We have the Elm Square Committee appointments up first. Reappointment Betty Gorski to Elm Square Committee through June 30th, 2021.
I'll make that motion. I'll appoint Betty Gorski to the Elm Square Committee through June 30th, 2021.
I'll second that.
The motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. We have the reappointment Greg Stark to the Elm Square Committee through June 30th, 2021.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Greg Stark, Elm Square Committee through June 30th, 2021.
I'll second that.
The motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one quick question. Do we know where this committee is going?
Um, yes and no.
I know we gave them a charge a year ago, or a year and a half ago, and...
You gave them a charge, but you gave them through, let me look, I think it's March of 2021 for them to make their report. And I know that they haven't obviously met with COVID. Uh, yeah, so they have to provide a final report to you by March of 2021. So currently, they didn't have enough members, so Mike Dempsey reached out to them. Betty and Greg wanted to be reappointed. You'll see the next one. Kathy has asked to be on the committee, and then they're going to start working on their recommendations. They had a Zoom meeting with Rebecca through the Downtown Initiative Discussion and Parking last week, or two weeks ago. I'm sure that will come into play. But they haven't really met much in the last six months.
Good.
All set?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Appointment of Kathy Castronellis to Elm Square Committee through June 30th, 2021.
I'll make that motion. I'll appoint Kathy Castronellis to the Elm Square Business Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Next up, we have appointment of Catherine Warden of Groveland to the position of Administrative Coordinator effective August 4th, 2020, the position rate of $19 an hour for 12 to 16 hours a week.
I'll make that motion. Catherine Warden, Administrative Coordinator effective August 4th, 2020.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Denise, you have anything you want to add about her?
Uh, no, I will just say if you review her resume that's in your packet, she had a wide variety of tasks and things that she handled. She has procurement knowledge, she has IT knowledge, she's worked on websites. She's very personable. I thought she'd be a good fit in that position. She has no issues attending your meetings, whether or not that's long-term or in the interim. I think she'd be a good person. She has five kids, she knows how to control a bunch of people, she knows how to deal with multiple employees and different personalities.
Are we like five kids now?
I'm just saying.
What are ages of children?
Just saying. So I think she'd be a good fit, and I think she has the knowledge to handle many different things and multitask.
Bill, do you want to...
Just my, my one main concern as I go through the resume is there's no practical experience in the last eight years.
So the two candidates are both stay-at-home moms and looking to get back into working, which is why the part-time positions appeal to both the Treasury Collection Clerk position.
And do we receive a lot of resumes for this particular position?
Um, we receive, so not so much this position because it was just posted. We received a lot for the Treasury Collection Clerk, and what I did was we interviewed them all for the same two positions. So anyone who came in, I had them in mind for either position that their skills would be best suited for.
Is that?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Kathy?
That's not me, right? She's very well qualified. I did the same thing for a while. I was at home with my children and went back to work, and I think I was even more energized going back into work because it's fun. It's a break from the children. Sometimes it's easier at work than it is at home, and so it can, can really be a nice balance. But I did want to ask about the days that we're expecting this, this person to be in. I didn't know if you were going to do like a, perhaps a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule or something like that, because it's a limited amount of hours.
It is. So to start, it's Monday through Thursday because we're closed currently on Fridays. And then Monday is, so it's 12 hours. Actually, I'm sorry, it's Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. Let me double check. It's, 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 I don't remember if it was all four days and it was three hours a day. I was leaving Monday for the meeting, so the extra hours per week would be for the nights, the Mondays that we have meetings. But I've asked her to be Tuesday through Thursday, 10 to 2, and Mondays as needed for meetings. So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 10 to 2, and Monday as needed, for the time being.
Okay, and so then my only question would be then if for some reason we haven't filled the Financial Director position and Denise is coming in on Fridays, I would want her to be there some hours on Friday.
Yes, so I have her going to Fridays when the time comes.
If it comes, okay.
Oh, so it's flexible? Okay, great.
Yeah, so when, when she was, her, her normal hours would include Friday as the four hours, but right now I figured there's no sense in having her come in on Fridays. So whether that changes in September, I figured a few weeks of me coming and going through piles, and then she can come in on the Fridays.
Somebody else? Ed, you all set? Jason?
All set.
All right. So the motion and a second. Discussion, all those in favor? Okay. Next up, we have the appointment of Michelle Biegen of West Newbury to the position of Treasury Collections, Collections Clerk effective August 4th, 2020. The position is at a rate of $19 an hour for 16 hours a week.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ed?
Yeah, maybe we could get some clarification on her. I don't see any, anything that would stand out as far as Treasury and collection work in the resume. Maybe we could elaborate on that a little?
Yeah, well, she, I mean, obviously on a resume, you don't go into full detail about what you've done. So she has work with, um, she made deposits, handled personnel matters, handled payroll, processed with her fantastic Sam. She owned a business. She did all the banking, all the deposits, all the reconciling. So we thought she would be a good fit. Her skills sort of matched that of a clerk in the Treasurer's Office. She did accounts payable through there. And receivables.
No, that's all of it.
Anybody else?
I just have the same question as I did the last candidate. The lack of recent relative work concerns me. I mean, I know with the COVID, a lot of people are out of work at this time, but, um, you know, sometimes the real world can pass these people by while they're sitting at home. I just, it just worries me.
Well, again, stay-at-home mom for many years.
Right.
And now trying to get back into the business field, so.
Yeah, sometimes that business field has changed so dramatically that it, it's difficult.
Yes, but I don't believe that the positions that we're hiring for are that specialized, that you can't give someone a chance that is, that has the experience and the knowledge and is trying to get back into it. That's my personal feeling.
Anyo?
That was my view.
Jason?
I'm good.
Um, I agree with Denise, and I also point out that she had started a Bachelor of Science in Management and an Associate in Business Administration. So ambitious, educated. I think she's a good choice.
Just a correction on that. She doesn't have a Bachelor of Science in Management.
Started it, I said.
Not finished.
I said that.
Right, but...
I said she's, so she has a pursued education. My point is that she is eager and learning and trainable.
Bill?
Good combination.
Just to that point, that ended 16 years ago.
Yep.
Quite frankly, we've hired department heads without any education, so I don't think that should be a sticking point right now.
No.
In my opinion, on a clerk position.
Just wanted to point that out. This has been a while. It's not, not recent.
You could take one class, and then there'll still be 16 years away from it.
I don't have that kind of patience.
No, nor do I. Nor do I. But still says she's going through it, so that's all that matters. All right, we've had discussion. All those in favor? All right. So they'll be starting tomorrow?
Yes.
Sounds good. All right, next up, we have discussion, possible vote, COVID-19 discussion. What do you got for us?
Things have been quiet for two weeks.
Have they?
I hate to use that word.
Don't use that word.
Not loud?
We always say the Q word.
A nurse never uses that word.
No, no, but two weeks today, new cases.
No new cases.
Right, and that last two that we had, one was from April.
Okay.
I remember. And no quarantines. I did hear something yesterday about something going on down at this, off the square, with people selling clothes off a big rack. So that concerns me, you know, groups. And I don't know how many people were there. I didn't go down myself. Don't they need a permit from the town?
We don't know if that was a yard sale, or if that was just...
I have no idea.
Free stuff.
Even a yard sale requires a permit, so it depends on...
Right, but I mean, we don't know what the, what, why the clothes were out there, or what the...
I have no idea, no idea.
Was it at a home?
I think it was off of...
I saw it. So...
I think it was off of Greg Stark's building there, the Gray building.
Correct, and there were people going through the racks, and they're, I mean, it sure looked like some kind of a, come get this stuff.
It could have been the animal shelter doing something for it to raise money. No one requested a permit, no one has a permit. We're still not issuing yard sale permits or anything like that. We have not issued here.
All right, so moving on to yard sales. Off of that topic. What are we, what are we thinking about permitting yard sales? Are we still under the assumption that's probably not a good idea?
I think it's difficult to limit the crowds. And, you know, I've been running the flea market up at VZI for quite some time, and people are all over the place. They're close together, and, you know, they're stretching over one another to look at something, and, you know, I think it's going to be hard to control the crowd.
Do you think that that's still the case, though? Do you think people basically understand not to crowd around, not to reach over people, not to gather, and at the edge of a table together?
I think in some cases, people are dropping their defenses.
Yeah.
Maybe not so much in New England, but other parts of the country and...
Well, we're not permitting yard sales from Minnesota, right? We're, we're permitting yard sales from Groveland.
Correct, correct, so.
But I, I would think by six months into this, that you would understand, and I've seen it not happen at the gym, but you would understand that you don't stand next to people, you don't gather in groups at a table or a gym at equipment or anything like that. It still does happen. I see it. It's frustrating because either people just don't want to pay attention, they don't want to conform, conform or anything like that, so.
You can't assume that people are going to do things a certain way.
No, we've done that, and they don't, they don't comply.
Doesn't work.
If these yard sales are outdoors, you've got the sun. If it's sunshiny, the sun goes on the products, so, and if you put, have, make sure that people put little stickers or, you know, in chalk or whatever, and mark, you know, six feet away or something, you know. But I would still think not until...
You have to wear masks to come onto my property to look at my stuff, that type of thing?
Pardon?
Or you have to have a sign of, you know, just a chalk sign that says you have to wear a mask in order to come look at it.
Right, and, right, then that's just, yeah.
What do we think about...
You know, masks and social distancing in effect.
Yeah. Ed, what do we think?
I know other communities are doing it. Most of them, they, you notice, they'll say there'll be a sign, masks required. It doesn't seem to be a problem elsewhere. I, I don't see any problem with it. Again, it's outside, it's always on a good day. You're not going to have a yard sale on a, on a rainy day. It, it, it seems to be working elsewhere. I don't see why it wouldn't work here. And again, they have the option that if, if people aren't proper distancing, then, then we can, we can turn around and, and vote it out.
Who's, who's going to be monitoring these things, Ed?
Uh, I don't know. No, no, as if you need to be monitoring it. You know, the people that are running the yard sale, they, they know that if, if the people aren't doing what they're supposed to, they'll probably get shut down.
I believe we'll have somebody who will complain and let us know.
Oh, they will. They will.
I would just say my only concern, if you choose to move forward with it, is if you find out that someone tested positive and attended a yard sale at 183 Main Street, how will you know who else went there? You know, just reaching out to contacts or something might be difficult on a tracing side of it, but otherwise, I'm not sure, you know, like Deb said, it's out in the sun.
People could be positive and be asymptomatic. No, they haven't.
You could ask them to put signup sheets, but I don't know if people would sign in if they stopped by a yard sale, but just in case.
Yeah.
Um, based on what I saw the other day, they weren't distancing, they weren't wearing masks. I guess my thought would be, um, so much work right now is being done to prepare the schools and to try to keep everything as safe and the level of infection rate so low as possible so that everybody will be comfortable trying to go back to school. Why couldn't we wait until the fall to reconsider this issue? Because most people are away in the summer anyway, ten, you know, so why not wait and let the school season start out and see how that's going and see how the infection rate is before you add another thing into the mix, which, this is not like what we do with the town parks, which were our own town teams. This would be people from other communities, higher infection rate communities potentially coming into our town. I just don't see the real need to do it. I don't see a petition with 100 names on it asking us to do it. I know there's some people that have asked about it, but I would ask for them to just please be patient and that we should wait. I think we should wait and err on the side of caution.
Bill, I can see the wheels turning.
I'm reserving my car. I'm just kind of taking it all in, listening.
Jason, anything?
I agree. I mean, I don't see the huge need for it, and it would probably be better just to put it off.
The only thing, putting it off till next year is one thing. Putting it off till the fall, I think, just increases the likelihood that we don't have the nice days, the sunshine, the heat, the humidity, things that are known to, um, limit the spread of the, of the virus on certain items. Is, is this yard sale such a widespread thing in Groveland that every house has it? I mean, I've never really noticed it to be that extensive around the town that thousands of people are coming in from all over the place and...
Denise, do you know how many permits we get requested each year?
No, I mean, I think the big thing is the Friends of the Council on Aging with their Yard Sale Day, which they're not moving forward with this year.
Right.
Uh, I would say on average, I think we probably only have, I'd say maybe 10. I don't think we receive a ton. I do know, I think it's three that she's gotten so far that we've turned down, just because we haven't been issuing permits.
Yeah, and to the point of, of ball teams, it may be, may be unbeknownst to some people here, but it's not strictly an in-town leagues. They're hosting teams from Saugus, Newburyport, West Newbury, Byfield, Rowley, Ipswich, Mosta Cape Anne. It's, it's where they, it's the district they play in. So we've already introduced residents from other towns into the town on our ball fields on a regular basis, so I'm not sure that's, um, I don't know how you prevent that. But if there's only 10, I don't know. I don't, Selectment Watson's point, I don't know how you shut them down that day. They're only one day, right? It's a one-day event?
Sometimes a weekend. I mean, people are home more, I mean, people are home more and have been home and cleaned stuff out, so they could be multi-day events. A lot of times they're from like 9 to 2 in the afternoon. That's pretty much it. They don't, it's not an all-day...
Yeah, it's not an all-day event. It's not like it goes on, you know, the entire weekend 24/7. And with such a limited number, I would think that after this amount of time, people should really be at this point sort of educated on what they need to do. Wear masks. I wear a mask everywhere I go if I go out of the house. I mean, it's just, it's just like breathing nowadays, you know what I mean? We're wearing my seatbelt to get into the caribou club, right? So I don't, I don't know if it's such a, a widespread issue that we should cause it to cancel. I'd be in favor of, when is the dates are they looking for?
I don't know specifically anymore.
So to your point, as I said, at the gym, you're supposed to do that as well, and that doesn't happen.
I know, I know. There's, there's compliance issues throughout the entire world.
That's supposed to happen, that doesn't happen.
There, there's no argument there. There are compliance issues all over the world, and we see them every day.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we take the next two weeks, see how many requests we get, and then at the next meeting, we can determine if we can have the yard sale the following weekend or something like that. That way, we have an understanding of how great the need is.
I'd agree with that, and also gives us two more weeks of data to see where the state is trending. Right now, it's beginning to trend...
Right now, we're trending, Groveland's trending well.
Groveland's trending well, but the state overall, correct me if I'm wrong, the state overall is starting to trend the opposite way in a bad direction.
Correct.
That may be due to a lot of summer tourists coming into the state. We know Cape Cod is, is, is big, you know, summer tourist destination. I, I don't know if that's the cause of it or if it's just the summer and parties like that happen in Chatham or the potty boats out in Boston Harbor.
Yeah, that was classic.
You know, there are still classic cases of stupidity that exist, and there's nothing I don't think we can ever do to eliminate them entirely. But I, I would agree that two weeks is probably sufficient time and give us sufficient time. The weather is still nice.
So right now, it's not allowed, right? We don't have to do anything to continue that for another two weeks. It's just not allowed.
Correct.
All right, so.
So, so the town clerk issues these permits. Do you want me to tell her to not issue them and just let you know how many there are?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
How many requests? Yeah, that would be nice.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
Which brings us to public opening of the town buildings. Review of Friday and evening hours, department head office hours, and in-person meetings.
So the one thing I'll touch on first, the in-person meeting, so that hasn't changed the state. I don't believe you will see in-person meetings until Phase 4. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the governor said last week that Phase 4 will be when a vaccine is readily available. So you're talking...
January, yeah.
...white sometime. You know, you can continue with the tenant-under folks in a meeting room, but the majority of the meetings would continue through Zoom or some other mechanism until you can have the public assembling again. So that is that item there.
Okay.
The Fridays and the evening hours, I guess it all goes back to what your thoughts are on reopening the town buildings. I put it on there just because I wanted to make sure that if, I, I think we spoke the last time about after Labor Day. I don't know if that's, revisit that and see if you're all on board with that. We can sort of just let employees know.
I think that that's a realistic expectation.
I will say we are going to have some hardships. I touched upon a little bit with Bill today. As the school districts are starting to look at what they're doing, one of the big difficulties we are going to have is there's no standard across the state. So each school district is coming up with their own plans. We have many employees now with small children. For instance, Amesbury is looking at a five-day fully remote work from, fully remote from home for the first few months. So we need to figure out how to accommodate those employees, if we will continue to allow them to work from home full-time while they are educating their children. The other school districts that may have some type of hybrid with in-person and at-home education, how we're going to handle that with employees, so...
I think it just has to be flexible, because everybody's going to be a little bit different, and not everybody lives in town, so they're going to be subject to whatever town they're coming from.
Yeah, so I just wanted to know your thoughts so that I could put something out in case you don't have a replacement come September 1st, when people are trying to figure out how to deal with their kids and, and their work. So if I could put something out, you know, having employees let us know what their schedules would look like with their education for their children.
I don't have a problem with people working remotely, as long as it's continuing the same work that's getting done now.
I mean, I think as long as the buildings are closed, when we start reopening, obviously we're going to have an issue if we have one-person offices, and those people need to be home so that you can revisit come September. But I would just like, I know employees are really starting to panic as these new school opening plans are coming out. I just want to give them a little bit of assurance that, you know, we'll work with them. You know, we obviously know from March to July, employees work from home, so they have the capability. I've purchased a bunch of new tablets to give employees that didn't have access to work from home, so we have that flexibility even more so.
Does anybody have a problem with that, being flexible for town employees, depending on what their situation dictates? I don't have a problem with that. Things have been working pretty well. Jason?
I don't have a problem with that. I think it's really important because we haven't even gotten the final on what the schools are going to do.
Right.
That's not even supposed to happen until mid-August.
I think being flexible is probably the best approach.
I agree. I mean, and I know from being the teacher side of things, that they're being flexible with the teachers as well. If there's a health reason why you shouldn't be in the school building, you're allowed to submit that. So health reasons, childcare reasons, just as long as they let us know, then I think, yes, whatever we can do.
Bill?
Every allowable, um, opportunity to, to do that should be given to the employees. My big deal, I, I sit on the high school, middle school, and my big deal was a single parent at home that has to juggle a schedule that may be other, every other day while they're trying to meet their rent or mortgage and pay the food bill is, could be tremendously burdensome, and I don't want to add any extra burdens on our employees through that. So, yeah, whatever we can do to accommodate them, as long as everything's getting done, I'm fine.
I don't see any problem with it as, as yet. This has been in effect up since the end of March. Haven't received any complaints on, on anybody that town hall is closed. I haven't been able to get ahold of anybody. The, if, if people have left messages for somebody that's not in the building, they, they do get back to them in a timely fashion. If they're, if they're working remotely, they, they get right back to them. It may not be the same day, but they, they will. Though it, and no complaint so far.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And then, so what do you want to do about Fri-, so we're still closed on Fridays and employees... and employees are still, public works employees, town hall employees are still having Fridays off. That's what we did at the beginning of COVID. Do you want to continue that for the time being? What do you want to do with Fridays?
Are we talking non-essential versus essential? Because all the, obviously, the essential workers, they're working five days a week anyways, or they're on call 24/7.
Right, right.
We're talking non-essentials?
Well, I would say essentials that still don't work on Fridays. There are a number of people that are not working on Fridays, are not responding to emails or participating in any work on Fridays. So, we, we put that in place back when we started with COVID, when we closed, that we decided to give employees the extra day off to have some downtime, because we considered, it started with the employees we were considering to be essential, to give them that extra day, and then it just continued. When we brought everybody back, they're still not back on Fridays. So, it covers both, I guess.
Again, there hasn't been many complaints, and the work's been getting done, so.
Yeah, have you noticed it to be a tremendous inconvenience to anyone in town that, you know, have had problems with the way we've orchestrated the whole shutdown?
No, I mean, we've had some limitations, but it's been minor. Just for instance, we had new docs put down at the boat ramp today. They wanted to come in on Friday. We had to postpone it till today, because we didn't have the staff on Friday to be there. Little things like that. I mean, I work. I have a standing community trail meeting every other Friday. I check emails and respond to calls and stuff on Fridays. I do it from home, mostly.
Yeah, but you're the exception, so take you out of it.
But, you know, I'm assuming, you know, I know if I reach out to Rebecca on a Friday, she'll get back to me. I mean, there are certain people that check their email seven days a week. It's just, I know it's come up, that we're still not having people back here on Fridays. So I don't know if you want to continue that. I think the evening hours should stay until we reopen to the public, because it's no sense having employees here till eight o'clock when no one's around. But the Fridays, I just wanted to check and see if we were still on the same page with that.
I haven't heard any complaints or any issues with it, so I don't see any need to change. But let's go around. Ed, any?
Oh, no.
It was on Labor Day, right?
Yeah.
Four weeks away?
Yeah.
I agree.
Well, I guess I'm wondering, in fairness, I mean, our police department is working full-time, right? What about the water and sewer? They're taking Fridays off, and the highways are Fridays off. I guess I would like to see the remote workers at least check an email Friday morning, maybe, just to start getting, getting back in the habit, if you want to put it that way, kind of starting to get back in stride, because, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with the remote working, but I feel like if you're supposed to be available a certain number of hours a week, we should try to start stepping back into that, and not just try and turn the switch on all at once. So, I think people should start checking email and responding to that on Fridays, Friday mornings.
I think most people do.
I think we should just make it overall, so it's fair.
Jason?
I think everything's been working within reason. Anybody that needs to respond to the emails, I haven't had a problem getting in touch with anybody.
Okay. Then we'll keep that the same. Department head office hours? Do we have?
I didn't know what that was.
We have responses on those?
You haven't told me to put anything out on those.
Oh.
You told me to put on the agenda, because you wanted to discuss office hours.
Yes, so we do want to know what the department head office hours are going to be for the next, what, at least month, right?
I'd say, what I would personally like is each department head come to us with their plan of how they're going to open after Labor Day, with what their office hours will be, and how the residents can get ahold of them in emergency purposes after office hours. If we could get each department head to discuss that with us, just so that we can, we're all on the same page with the departments, as I think that would be a prudent and fruitful discussion. Because right now, we don't know. I mean, they're left at their, we've kind of left it to their own mercy, right? There is no uniform policy at all within the town, from department to department to department.
Currently, correct.
Yeah.
I mean, for the most part, we've asked folks to come back, but correct, there is no standard right now.
Yeah, we should have a minimum number of office hours by each department anyways, that somebody's available, whether that's for...
Now, are you saying department or department head?
With department head.
Mr. Chairman?
In office hours, or?
Oh, yeah.
So you want them in the, in their respective office and available?
Yes.
Might that suggest by our next meeting, that each department head submits to us in routing, in writing? This way, we don't have to kind of congregate in the hall, their plan and their office hours that we can review, and then by the time Labor Day gets back, we can come back with either our okey-dokey or our objections or challenges to whatever they come up with. Would that work?
You think two weeks is...
I have a question.
Two weeks is more than enough time.
Two weeks should be more than enough time to write a one-page, "This is how we're planning on opening the department. These are department hours, a plan of being, yada, yada, yada." It should be one page, very brief from each department head. We can review very quickly, and either we object to it, or we bless it and say move on.
Right.
I think that's the most expedient way, as opposed to bringing them one after another, after another, and then we get...
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
I think it's a waste of time, and then we crowd the halls with people.
Yeah, so if we can do something like that.
I have a question.
I understand, Kathy. We are having a discussion. I heard you the first time, and I was going to call on you once we finish talking. Are we done?
Yeah, that was just my suggestion.
Yes, Kathy?
I, this is the first I've heard of office hours. Are you planning that they have to be in their office, because you want to make sure they're sitting in an office? Or are you planning that people are going to come see them in this office? I haven't seen this topic brought up before for us. So I'm just, I'm just...
Office hours.
I know we've always had office hours when the buildings are open, but now I'm asking you, what do you mean, what is this? Is it just because you want, like, the fire chief to sit in his office for some, some certain hours on a certain day of a week? What are we talking about here?
Yes.
So you want them to, like, one day a week, be in an office for a certain amount of hours, just like one day a week?
Whatever the hours, the minimum that we recommend, yes. Whether that's over two days or one day, yes. That way, the people know that that department head is available to talk by phone or by email during those four hours.
During those hours, okay.
Or six hours, whatever it is. Not Tuesday afternoon, I'm going to leave a message for this person, and then I may or may not get a call back, because I don't know what the office hours are.
Okay, so do we have a set amount of office hours?
We're getting to that. We haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, because it seemed like Bill might have already had an idea of what it was, and I just haven't seen anything on this, that's all.
I have no idea what it is. That's why I was suggesting that we, we ask the department heads to give us just a one-page, you know, "This is my plan," kind of, how I'm going to open up the department, how I'm going to, you know, what office hours I will maintain. So when the phone rings, it doesn't go to a voicemail, and the actual person picks it up and says, "Hello, you've reached XYZ department. My name is Joe Johnson. How may I help you today?" That's what we want, or that's what I'm, my goal is, or that's what the department head's goal should be, so that everyone in the town knows when they can reach a certain individual or a certain department head with a question or concern or issue or problem, that they know that they can get some resolution without leaving a voicemail and wondering, "Did that person get the voicemail, or did they not? It's been two days. Nobody's got back to me. Should I call again? Should I go down? I can't go down, because they won't let me in." Maybe you try to email, just trying to make it easy on the residents to know that this person is in, you can contact them from such and such a time, on such and such a date, they'll be available. This person's available on that day, you know, so that it's not... Right now, we don't have anything. The offices aren't open at all, and people can leave voicemails or emails, but the fact is, and we have all experienced it, right? You call up, and you get a voicemail, you email someone, but you're not really sure if you're getting the message through, if the people that you really need to talk to are getting the message that you're trying to leave.
Did that today. I called the Mexican consulate in Boston. Says they're open, but I left a message. Now I got to call back.
That's what I'm trying to avoid, Bill, and I think...
Just, just two things, just to rebut something that Bill had said. We just got done with the discussion on opening the town buildings, when he said there hasn't been any complaints about anybody trying to get ahold of any of the offices. Second of all, if you all remember, that was always the purpose of the Monday evening hours, so that the department heads were all, were all in the office, so that they could get sign-offs on billing permits, et cetera, and so that they didn't have to shop around and go to this office today, the another office. They were all supposed to be available on Monday evenings to get sign-offs. And so that's something that's been in effect for, for years, the Monday evening hours. But we're, and I would say, until they're open on evenings, then, Monday evenings, then we just hold off on that.
So I just, not all department heads work Monday nights?
Right.
So, just to put that out there, that not everyone is available on a Monday night?
Well, no one's available Monday night.
Well, currently, yes.
Right.
So I guess...
But the plan is to, to put this together, so after Labor Day, when we think we're going to open town hall, and we're going to have hours Monday night, or we're going to have certain kind of business hours, whatever they are, that we have an idea of what each department's schedule looks like for someone to be in that office, or the department head to be in that office.
Right, so I guess my question to you would be, or the board would be, do you want the expectation of this to start after Labor Day, regardless of whether or not we're open? So that there's still some hours that people are in the building that people know they can get in touch with them? Or do you want to just coincide this with the reopening of the buildings?
I would think that those office hours should be in place now, right? I mean, I think that the people should know that if I'm going to call this office on Monday at two o'clock, they're supposed to be open, and someone's supposed to be in that office, and they should be able to get ahold of someone. If not, they should be able to get a call back within an hour, right? I mean, it's not like just leaving a voicemail on a random number, like I did for the Mexican consulate, and finding out, you know, "Maybe I'll get a call back, maybe I won't." I don't know if they're there. They said their office hours were there, but nobody called me back, so that's what we're trying to avoid. Jason?
No, I agree. I think it's very important to have a type of structure, not only for the residents, but also for the other boards that want to get in touch with somebody. You know, when they're going to be there, how they're going to be there, and they can plan accordingly.
Kathy?
I just could add that the same flexibility that we just said, because of the school situation, I know we're already, we're already delaying the students coming back 10 days. Who knows if that's going to change? So, if the department head wants to have a way to forward the calls to home, I'm fine with that. And if you're just trying to come up with, you know, two hours on this day and two hours on that day, I think that's a good idea. I just want to offer the same flexibility, because people don't know what's going to happen in the fall.
So, on that note, what are the number of hours per week we're expecting department heads to be at their desks or in their office?
Or, if I can add, so, or available.
Available.
So maybe, you know, if they can't be in their office, if they, if it's a Tuesday from 12 to four or something, if they're working from home, they should still be available and able to respond to calls or emails during that time.
Right.
Among other times, but that should be a dedicated time, I would say.
Right.
If you're looking at a flexible schedule.
So, what are we looking, four, six hours a week? Should, should have that maintained amount of hours?
I want to start it off on a minimum and see if, actually, if it's productive.
I would say four hours would be productive, as a minimum.
I don't, yeah, I think six is a little, a little much. Might be taking them away from doing some other work.
Alright, so we'll let them decide what that four hours looks like, and then see what happens? Is that what we're talking about?
I like that.
I, I don't know. I'm just old school. I go to a job, it's 40 hours a week, I spend in the office.
I go to a job, it's 70 hours a week.
Yeah, yeah, I know. That's what they do, they tell me this story, but... So, I guess I'm just used to being in an office, answering my phone, and doing my job. So, I guess, I know this is a different environment we live in. It's just weird, and just like what Watson's pointing, I don't think, we haven't received any. I think that the, there are few complaints, but I don't think there's zero with having the building closed and being unable to get in talk, in contact with certain department heads. If there was zero, I wouldn't be having this discussion.
Ed, you want to say something?
Yeah, just, you've got to remember that private industry is a little bit different than municipality. There isn't a department head that doesn't have other duties. We'll give you, just as an example, building inspector, he's out, not only is he in the office, but he's out, he's out on the road. Water department, superintendent of the water department, same thing. He's in the office, but he may have to go out on the road. Fire chief, he may be in the office, may get a call, go out on the street. It's, it's not something that you can define, the fact that because you spend 40 hours a week in, in an office, you're working on, as some of them call, the dreaded private sector, where you don't have the interruptions where you have to go out on the street. And municipal government is a little bit different than that. I can't think of one department head that doesn't have to go out on the street.
Right, but given that, that might come up with the fire chief, or the inspector, or something like that, it should be 12 to four, Monday is their office hours. They should, I should know that if I want to get ahold of the fire department, that 12 to four is a really good time for me to call. And I should have expectations that my chances of talking to someone there and answering my questions would be...
Very good.
Very good from 12 to four, yeah.
My only point to that was, private sector, public sector, I think one thing can be expected. Somebody's getting paid to do a job. I expect them to do the job they're getting paid for, just like my employer expects me to do the job they're paying me for. So, private, public, municipal, I think there's one thing in common. Somebody's getting paid to do a job. They should do that job accordingly.
So, what are the...
Yeah, I mean, if you're talking four hours, 10% of their time being spent in the office, every department head has all sorts of reports and everything else you need to calculate out and figure out, and that seems like an awful small amount of time to be dedicated to an office. I mean, they have a staff, and that's why they have a staff, so if something comes up, they can have the staff take care of it. There's always going to be emergencies that pop up, but, yes, they should be available, especially for such a small amount of time.
So, what do you need from us? What do we need to do?
So you want me to put a notice out asking department heads to provide four hours when they would be available to residents after Labor Day? And you want it before your next meeting, and then you're going to discuss it? Or you want them to just implement that?
No, we'll discuss it.
Are they going to hear back from you after the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll, we'll review those, and then make sure that that's what we're looking for, and then we'll have that ready to go for after Labor Day. Yeah.
I was just wondering, because everybody was used to nights, if you would just pick, if perhaps we suggest a day.
I would love to just pick a day, but...
Well, no, why don't we suggest a day, and then if there's some of them that that wouldn't work for, we'll know. But that way, most of the residents will know, on this day, this is when the department heads are going to be checking their email and buy their phone, and, and go at it that way, so maybe Monday afternoon?
Like a strong suggestion, 12 to four, Monday?
Yeah, and see what they say. See if that works or doesn't work for them.
I mean, I think it's important, and I can certainly put it back in there, that, or in the notice, that, you know, when the buildings reopen and we're open Monday nights, the expectation is those hours also become Monday night. I mean, if, if people are supposed to be here on Monday nights before we close, they're supposed to be here Monday nights when we reopen.
Right.
So it may be that there's more hours that they're available, but, you know, this doesn't take the place of Monday nights when the building reopens.
Right, and if I could add one thing, I just want to make sure that, that our department heads understand that, I personally feel that they're probably putting in, most of them, more hours than they used to, because I know myself personally, when I went home and started trying to teach remotely, it was a long day, and I took breaks, and I was back at it at night at 10, getting lessons done, because I was dealing with so many emails. When, when you can't just have a conversation with someone, and you have to go back and forth and email, it takes longer, as you probably know too. I mean, it's just, email is exploding. So, it's a, it's a suggestion or quest from us. If it's possible, they could do this, that would be appreciated.
Is it a suggestion or is it a requirement?
The suggestion is Monday afternoons.
Yeah, I think it'd be a suggestion.
The suggestion, 12 to four Mondays is...
Right, and we're requesting that they come back to us with it.
It's a, Jason's point, four hours is not a lot of time. Four hours is probably the minimum amount of time that I would look for anybody to be at their desk, working. I mean, provided there's not, there's not some kind of microburst that went through town that requires everybody to scramble at that point and run to Center Street and chop down trees and power lines.
Right. Alright, so, let's see what happens with that. School reopening plan? I mean, I've heard, I've heard probably 18 different plans, 18 different scenarios, and all...
I've heard, I don't know, is, is the superintendent giving a, having a meeting on Wednesday?
Wednesday. There is a Zoom meeting. Everyone is encouraged. Everyone is encouraged to go online ahead of time, I believe. And there's a list of preset questions that you can put a thumbs up or a thumbs down, which will indicate to them high or lower importance of that question so they can address the higher importance of questions first. And then there will be, that will be available on videotape to run after that.
What's video?
With my VCR?
It's on this little piece of wax going out, spins around at 33 RPMs.
This is gonna right here.
But there will be an opportunity to address the conference afterwards as well with follow-up questions and things like that. So I know that's, I think you must've got it too, where everybody that has a child in the system got that email.
I get asked a lot from coworkers in other communities what we're doing. And it's just, every time we'd solve one problem, three more come up. And it's, it's ongoing, and I just, I can't wait to see what the final recommendation is Wednesday for our school system.
It's been difficult. I know that the committees I sit on, the discussion is constantly about the children, the children, the children. And I try to move that discussion on to the children are not the only people in the building.
Right.
How, what's the number of teachers, administrators, cafeteria workers, custodians, and ancillary workers in that building that may be in that high-risk, vulnerable state? And what good will it do the children if the teacher, him or her, comes down with COVID and is required to be out quarantining for 14 days, and they have a substitute in the class? It's, this is not a very easy, as you can imagine. It hasn't been a very easy discussion because things constantly changes. Your nurses can relate to, the information changes by the hour. Two weeks ago, kids couldn't get infected, right? And now we see a summer camp in Georgia where 100 of the 200 campers, most of them under the age of 15, are infected with the COVID-19.
And then they shut down again.
And they shut that down again. So it almost took, takes the information we had about two weeks ago, rolls it up in a ball, and throws it out the window, and we're waiting for the rebound, for the new information to come through. So it, it's very difficult, but-
So by the next meeting, we should have an idea of what the framework of that opening looks like?
I think Wednesday you'll have, most of the parents will have a very good idea. I mean, I know you're involved in the Bagnell Committee. And I, I think I can speak for you that we wanna assure the folks that we have kids and, we have children in the school system. We're not gonna send our children anywhere where they'll be at risk. So if we're gonna send our children, your children will be safe. I'm not gonna send mine unless it's absolutely safe for everyone, so.
Alright, so let's move on to the COVID grant funds. Kathy, you have questions on that?
Yes, I do have some questions. I just, you know, especially with Denise leaving. And normally Denise would be the one, I would imagine, managing these funds for us, correct? Yes. So, what I'm wondering is, reaching out like to the other departments in town. I know you've done work within the Town Hall here. I imagine, does this have ducts or anything that you have to filter? Could we also take a look at where the highway workers take their break? I've never even been in that building, and see if we can get, even temporarily, a cleaning service in to clean it? And see if they can be spaced out enough, whether they're in a meeting. I know they're not there much, but when they are there, to make sure that, that their health and safety is a priority. The same for the library, police, and both fire stations. And I, I did call Greg LeBrec today because I was curious what our responsibility would be at the Bagnell. It doesn't, he was not clear to me on, on anything. Whittier is, I know more about Whittier because I've seen their plan. So I know what they've done. I know how they put in additional work on the ventilation. I know that all the kids are gonna be in outside classrooms, there's gonna be a box fan in the window. I know they're creating extra space outside to bring groups of students. I just wasn't sure, because sometimes we don't seem to know at Bagnell when we're supposed to be doing something or when the district is. So in this case, where their plan is still kinda, it's due by August 10th, right?
I think, I think that's the day.
Yeah, that's the date. I understand you have to have three plans, in, everybody in, hybrid, and everybody remote. And so they should be close to that. I just didn't know if any part of our COVID funds would have to be used to help the Bagnell School at all. I didn't, I didn't know that.
You wanna talk?
Yes, while you're chewing. So the state made it clear to us that the regional school districts all got their own bucket of COVID money.
Okay.
Quite frankly, I don't know how much they got. We haven't gotten an answer how much they got. I have been working with Bagnell because there are things that are not being provided, masks, face shields, and plexiglass partitions, because the district would not provide the plexiglass partitions for the office staff. They felt it was not appropriate, where I felt it was appropriate, so I offered to buy those under our COVID grant here. I'm in pretty regular communication with the staff at the Bagnell School. I've told them if there's other things that they need, if we can help them with, they are still trying to work out with the district what needs to happen and what they are doing. But we have offered, I have offered to help because it's our building and what we can do. Back to your other point, those things are fine if that's what the board wants, but 95% of that's gonna take a procurement, and it's not gonna happen in the next week before I leave. So-
It's gonna be ongoing, too.
We had the duct work in this building cleaned.
Yes.
It was $9,900 because it was under the $10,000 threshold. We cannot bring the same company in because once we use them again, it exceeds the $10,000. Requires a full bid process to do the rest of the buildings. So anything like that, that you wanna do over multiple buildings, again, it's gonna require a bid process to go out and post a bid and get the bids back and award it.
So when you're back off vacation?
When I'm back on Fridays, I can certainly do some of that.
Well, I just feel that we have to do what we can for all of our employees.
Well, and, but we are. So we've provided lots of things to all buildings. We've provided foggers, wipes, UV light protection. You know, Steve goes around and cleans them.
He doesn't clean the highways. I mean, that's too far.
No, the highways, but the highway, they're out all day. I mean, they shouldn't be congregating in the building. Their job is to be, same thing with the water and sewer, their job is to be out. So they shouldn't be sitting in an office.
And, but where do they go when they need to come in, when they need to eat their lunch, when they need to sit down briefly and go over something? They need to have a clean space. I mean, it should be done.
No, I don't disagree, but their union contract requires them to eat on their job site. They're not supposed to go back to the highway department to take a lunch. Their contract requires them to eat on the job site. Again, that's something you can certainly do. We've never done it, so if we're gonna hire a cleaning company to clean the buildings that Steve does not clean, that's gonna take a process.
Well, I think during the COVID, we should be. I mean, that's, this is what we're supposed to be doing with this money, is keeping things clean so that infection doesn't spread. If they're all using the same bathroom, it's gotta get cleaned.
And maybe just provide wipes, like we do over here, and have them there, and they clean it themselves.
Well, it sounds like we're doing something right. We haven't had any new cases in two weeks, so it seems like we're doing okay the way we're going.
Yeah, I think just because the money's there doesn't mean you can apply all situations to that money. I mean, you can request that we are able to purchase things that are COVID-related, related. But it has to be approved, and if it's not approved, then we own the bill.
Right, so for instance, in the first round, so, I mean, quite candidly, the town of Groveland was awarded $603,000 for COVID-related uses. That has to be requested and approved, as Mike just said. So in the first round, to close out fiscal '20, I submitted a request of $75,000 and change, which was the stuff we'd already spent, an estimate of things we were spending, and I built in a new van for the Council on Aging because they're driving all of our senior, the doctor's appointments. That was denied. So the van was denied, it does not meet the criteria for the COVID costs. So, if, if we went out and bought the van and said we wanna use that money, and they denied it, we would have to come up with those funds. So it really has to be specific to COVID, and there is a very specific list of items that it can cover. Most of it is PPE, teleworking, and with telework, it's, it can only be laptops. You can't buy desktop computers and call it teleworking. You know, cleaning and disinfecting. So to date, we've spent $41,000 from this. And the majority of it, I mean, a lot of it is cleaning and disinfecting. We have more wipes than I know what we're gonna do with, but... So, you know, everything is reviewed. I'm the only one that authorizes to spend from here because I go through the categories and make sure it's appropriate. I can certainly continue to keep an eye on that on the Fridays until you have somebody else to make sure the money is being spent appropriately under their correct categories.
But ultimately, your replacement would do the same thing.
Yes, yes.
I think that's what you're worried about, is what happens when she's gone.
And then I think they said like, the fall would be round two, that they would open it up again to submit your new requests that you view there. So right now, it's anything that's been incurred from March 17th, and they have it through December 31st, is what the grant would cover. That may change, obviously, if COVID continues past December 31st, but that's the period of time right now. So, whether we'll use the remaining $33,000, I am gonna buy more surface tablets because I was thinking of a couple other departments that don't have any. I'm gonna give one to the fire chief. I'm trying to think of people that can use them. But otherwise, I don't see a huge expense unless you do some of the larger.
But also-
Please second.
Just to touch in a point now, the way I read that, that grant, a lot of that was supposed to be for the Board of Health.
Nope, they have their own grant.
Have their own grant?
The Board of Health gets their own private money. Ours, ours came from the state. Yep, so this is federal money. The federal government gave it out to the states, and the state allocated it out to all the towns. They have money direct from the state that goes only to the Board of Health.
Quickly, so we can move on, so we can get through this in the next half hour.
Okay, yeah, really quick. I just feel that any buildings that we're not at least cleaning, we should have like once a week cleaning, if it's a service fine. And also, since we only have one person that does all the cleaning, if, if he wants to take time off, can we bring in a substitute service under the COVID? Would that be approved, do you think?
I'm sure it would. We just have to, would find somebody.
For a service, right, yep. Okay, so, I mean, those could be potential uses too.
All set? All set?
All set.
Alright, social media discussion?
So I'm just gonna, so I think we're done with COVID.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for coming in.
Kathy, I don't know if you wanted to quickly, everyone has the thing you sent out.
What color are we? Oh, we're blue. We look good.
Yeah, is that the one Claire must have put?
You like it?
Oh, maybe, yeah. Okay.
We're the blue bar. We're the short, short, short little blue bar. Unless nobody's the big red bar.
Yeah, we don't live in a bubble. That's the problem.
What's the matter?
We don't live in a bubble.
No, well, you know, the reality is, if we pop four cases, percentage, you know, statistically, you'll see our bar jump again too. It doesn't take that many cases to get the bar up again.
No, not with such a small population.
Right, right. Bye, Claire. Thank you.
Bye.
Oh, we can-
No, we're moving on to social media discussion.
Okay.
I guess we don't need Denise.
So-
Yeah, social media discussion, Bill.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, I've had a little bit of time to review some of these, but I would like to table this whole discussion till the next meeting so I have further time to really-
It is a lot to read.
Dive into this, into the meat and potatoes of these many extensive pages so that we don't rush into something crazy, but take our time and make a policy that really is worthwhile.
I agree.
Motion to Chair?
Motion to Chair?
Sorry, motion to Chair, yeah. See how much sleep I got.
As much as me.
Alright, assessing manager job posting?
I mean, I saw that.
Can I just, I'm gonna put this on a future agenda, the item you just tabled, or you're just gonna bring it back up?
Um-
So do you wanna just tell me how many meetings? I have your agendas for the end of the year ready to go. So if you pick a meeting, I can add it on there now.
Next meeting.
Sure?
No, meeting after that. She would've just told me what meeting you wanna put on.
Next meeting might be-
Yes, that's her last meeting, not the last.
No, this is my last meeting.
Oh, wait a minute, this is your last meeting.
This is my last meeting, so I don't know.
I think next meeting, put it on for a short amount of time, we'll start to work on it. How about that?
No, we just said the meeting after that.
Okay, well then we'll do that.
Alright, so, what's that, the 10th?
The 31st? August 31st?
We'll meet on the 4th?
Meeting would be the 17th or the 31st in August.
17th, 31st.
What do you mean? Okay.
Assessing manager job posting.
So, as you know, Debbie Webster is retiring. Some questions came up after town meeting about the assessor's office. So I've included some documentation from Town Council. Some of their write-up was misinformation. The question never came up to remove members of the Board of Assessors. So, you can actually see what I asked them. It was pretty clear what I asked them, so. So that whole section was not from us asking. But the fact of the matter is that if she is, if the assessing manager is considered the assistant assessor, then the Board of Assessors has the power to oversee as a department head. Her position is not, I mean, she does a lot of those duties. Either way, the Board of Assessors could easily take a vote to have the daily operations and the management done by the finance director. It does not need a town meeting vote. They could vote for it. I've spoken with Debbie. She said that she's spoken to her members, and they are inclined to do that at their next meeting.
Do we know when the next meeting is going to happen?
They don't, because she was on vacation, and now she is out under her mandatory quarantine after returning from vacation. So she should be back in the office next Monday. I'm waiting for Claire. Claire will have to clear her, after her quarantine, to come back, but tentatively next Monday. And then, but in the meantime, I need to get a job posted so that we have something out to the market and start getting resumes. So, I will, if, if you're all in agreement, then we, I can move forward and ask her to put on her agenda to have the Board of Assessors vote the management and oversight of the position under the finance director.
I think so.
That will take care of the, sort of, the main issue. The second matter would be posting the position. So I provided to you some recommendations. I went back and forth on what the right number of hours is. I really thought 32 was a funny number of hours. But if you work it out differently, it actually works for a whole week. Many departments now are closed completely on Friday, so the proposal I'm putting in is just a Monday through Thursday position, 32 hours. It covers the Monday night hours, and then full days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. You'll see from the current hours, it's like a 9:00 to 3:30, 9:00 to 12:00. So I think this would give some continuity in the office, eight hours on Monday, eight hours Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then just Fridays, the office would be closed. So I think we should keep the 32 hours. And then the proposed salary, so I put down what the position is currently making. I gave you a little synopsis of the towns that I have access to in our survey, our online survey of communities that are under 10,000 in population that were most closely related to us, and what the salary ranges were. I also put in, just for comparison's sake, the assistant treasurer collector's hourly and the Council on Aging Director's hourly wage, just again, so you can see for comparison. So I would recommend the range of $27.05 to $32 an hour. That gives it a range of $45,000 to $53,000. It seems the most comparable for the marketplace. I think it allows some room if there's someone that is more qualified, that you want to offer them more if they're coming from another community. Can bring them in for a lesser salary if they need more training and need more guidance. Again, this is strictly a recommendation, but I would like to get something out to the market sooner rather than later. While I'm still here to at least get it posted and start collecting resumes.
Yes, yup. Worked for me. Anybody else have any questions on this?
Just on the job title, should we change it to an assistant assessor? Our assessor clerk could be in line with the whole letter from Town Council and everything, or is that a big deal?
Well, you shouldn't call an assistant assessor because they have much more authority by title of assistant assessor.
Assessor clerk, like Meremac?
I, I don't know. I think, so assessing clerk could be fine. I do think this, this position does more duties than a regular clerk would do.
Okay.
I think that's why the hybrid assessing manager, I mean, I'm kinda, I mean-
Fine with it?
Yeah, I think it's a standard title. It kinda covers what it does.
Okay. Then, okay. Other than that, I'm fine. Everything looks great.
I'm good.
Ed?
Yeah.
Bill?
Makes sense. Good first step.
Okay, so this will go, I'm gonna put the supervisor down as the finance director. Should something change with the Board of Assessors, we can always just change that after the fact, but I think we'll put that forward. The 32 hours a week, finance director and the proposed salary and hours.
Great.
Okay.
Appointment of Town Government Study Committee, we have seven candidates. Do we wanna take these as a lump, or do we wanna do these individually?
I was, okay, with everyone, I'd like to propose that we just appoint the top five of the list. My reasoning is that, well, Joe came to see us. Paula Burke is someone who, to my knowledge, has not been involved- Paula Burke is someone who, to my knowledge, has not been involved in the town government, so that would give a good perspective. Betty Gorski, I think, while still on the Groveland Housing Authority, is not involved in other boards in town. She's been separate from us, so it gets it away from us, and she has good experience. John Christopher hasn't been involved in any town boards or committees for years, so he just has very good background. And similar to Andrew Cox. I'd like to hold off on John Osborne, because I was going to ask him to provide some help. I understand he's one of the sole remaining people who was on the well pollution committee that might have information on the Mill Pond area. So I was hoping to encourage him to be involved in that project, if we get that going. And Mike Dempsey, he does so much for us already. I thought personally that we were trying to move all of this out of the town government, out to a fresh field, give them our information and see what they think. So that's, those first five were my recommendations.
You just appointed Betty to the Elm Square Committee.
Oh, that's right, so she's on another town committee.
I mean, I don't think it makes much of a difference, but we did.
She hasn't really been involved in the core in here, town hall kind of committees, is what I'm saying. I thought that part of what we're trying to do is to take it out of here to get a fresh perspective. But those are just my thoughts.
So you're looking for, out of these seven, you're looking for five, and then I believe it was Jason and you that were going to be on the committee?
No, I'm not on it.
No, and Mike?
No, that's a different, that was a different.
That's the assistant director study.
Right.
That doesn't mean that.
Oh, yeah, 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 they didn't want, they didn't want somebody on the Board of Selectment on that committee. Who are the five again?
Top five. She's suggesting the top five, as opposed to.
All seven.
John, that she wants to do something else, and Mike Dempsey, who is on everything that we have.
Most powerful man in town.
Anything else?
No.
Can I just ask, so when you originally created the committee, you said between five and nine. Are you capping it at five and only appointing the five? Are you appointing five and continuing to seek new members?
I think whatever we decide tonight is what we decide.
Yes, agree.
Bill?
I know Mr. Demore's position, because he's been here before. I would like to hear the positions of the other six candidates here. Because my feeling all along has been, everybody on that committee needs to pull the rope in the same direction. They have to have the belief that the town needs to evolve toward the town manager, administrator, form of government. So I'm reluctant, other than Mr. Demore, to put any of them on until I hear them verbally say that is what I believe should be done, so that I know that they're not going to be an obstacle in this committee's charge to get to that, get us to that point.
Jason?
I'm actually fine with all seven of them. I think they would all work together well. And after speaking with Joe, I know he's worked with many of the people that are there, and I think he would direct it and run it, and I think a little bit of variety in the, in the process would allow them not to overlook any positions that may be required, and that might cost the town extra money. And so I think a little bit of a difference opinion in that would be beneficial. And I don't think Joe would allow anything, anybody to hold it up.
No, Joe is very organized. I'm okay with the seven. I think having more people is probably better, again, for that same different, different viewpoints and different input and different backgrounds. So somebody want to make a motion on either a group, an individual, or subset of the group, or what we want to do?
Yeah, I don't see any problem with all, with all seven. We got different perspectives here, people from different walks of life, and it certainly makes sense. We talked about, what, five to seven, so we get seven, sounds good. I'll make the motion. Make the motion, all seven.
That we appoint all seven to the town government study committee?
I'll second that.
All right. You have a motion and a second and any further discussion? All those in favor? No, yes? Yes? Abstained?
No, no.
No, one no. Didn't know what this was.
I had to hold my hand down while you guys were on, yes.
So it was kind of up, it was like a chicken wing. We didn't know if it was up or down.
No, I was waiting.
All right. Next up, we have vote to the board, accept the resignation of Steve Bombard, Highway Laborer effective July 26, 2020.
I'll make the motion. We accept the resignation of Steve Bombard, Highway Laborer.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Yes.
Yes. Were we able to get an exit interview to understand why a person we just hired left so soon, so that we can better educate ourselves on why this took place and how we can, or what we can do to prevent this from happening in the future?
No. I was not even contacted by the employee.
So we don't, we don't know?
It was a text message to the department head.
We don't know if there's a better offer, personal issues?
It's believed to be personal issues, based on conversations that took place.
What's that?
That just leaves us in the dark, not knowing.
Yeah. Welcome to government. All those in favor? Approve and sign the warrant for the 2020 state primary. I think I did that.
Well, you may have signed it. You need to approve the state primary.
Yeah, motion to approve the warrant for the 2020 state primary.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any other questions, comments?
The, the funding is available. You have, I guess it'll be another election, right? You have masks, and you have all the PPP required, like the June election.
Yep, so they're still working out the logistics. Beth is still working out the logistics. We've looked at the floor plan, and having it more in the building and more waiting inside the building than outside the building for both the primary and the presidential. Presidential, given that it will be November, so we've been working that out. We are going to use some of the COVID costs for additional help, because we have, we've been inundated with the mail-in ballot requests, so she's going to start processing those with some help. So we may have a large number voting by mail, but we will have the precautions in place to vote in person as well, so.
Is there any of that COVID grant funding that is available to us to use toward those resources? Or have we used them up already?
No, no, I just said that. We have the COVID grant that we can use for the help for the mail-in ballots.
Yeah, I guess so.
So yes, we will use the COVID costs for both the PPE and the additional help needed, specifically for the mail-in ballots. For the, it covers the postage to mail them out, and the staff to help process the requests and send out the ballots, et cetera.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Approve and sign the $5,000 reserve fund transfer request to fund the administrator coordinator position.
Motion to approve and sign $5,000 reserve transfer, reserve fund transfer request to fund the administrative coordinator position.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Yes, all right. Authorize the chair to sign the River Pines paving project environmental review.
Motion to authorize Chair Wood to sign the River Pines paving project environmental review.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Abstained. Declare the old boat ramp docks as surplus.
So just quickly.
Quickly.
We took the boat ramp docks out today. They have to come back tomorrow to finish the installation of the new aluminum docks. Rennie was approached by a boater that uses our docks and asked if he could have them. In talking with Rennie, he said it would cost us about $600 to $1,000 to properly dispose of them. They have no value to us to use anywhere else, so he is recommending they be declared surplus, and we donate them to this gentleman, who is going to break it up and use it with him and a couple of the other boaters in town at their own personal river access.
We have a motion and a second, and then discussion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we declare the old boat ramps surplus.
Second.
All right, discussion? Ed?
Yeah, I looked at those today. They're actually junk.
Take our junk, okay.
They're beyond junk, and I don't see if we, if we put them out, we get nothing for them. Give them, give them to the guy.
Kathy, you have something on it?
No, I'm just kidding.
I agree with Selectman Watson that, that, I don't think they're anything, I don't even think they're worth firewood.
All right. All those in favor of declaring the boat ramp docks as surplus? Fantastic. I am going to jump over to correspondence, so we can read through those. Minutes from May 4, 2020, minutes from July 27, 2020, letter from the building inspector regarding 81A Seven Star Road, email from Liz Jones, Treasury of the Friends of the Library, minutes from April 13, 2020, minutes from May 11, 2020, minutes from June 8, 2020, minutes from June 29, 2020, minutes from July 6, 2020. This is why this document was 60 pages long. Minutes from July 20, 2020, comparison of 14-day COVID positivity rates, and now.
Can I just say quickly? So that should be all of your minutes with the exception of May 26. She just forgot to attach them, so.
Okay.
That should be everything caught up to date, with the exception of May 26, and I will have those for your next meeting.
All right, and then finance director time.
So Comcast reached out to Bill Hewig regarding the cable renewal. They believe that the most recent proposal that he negotiated with them will be accepted without any further negotiating. He is expected to be in touch with us shortly on that. And then to touch upon what Kathy asked about earlier with the COVID money, so Steve, our facilities coordinator, is going to be on vacation the week of August 17. Normally, when he's, when he is on vacation, the building employees just take care of cleaning, but we have the issue with the pines and the mandatory required cleaning of every day that needs to take place, so how would you all like to handle that?
Can we hire someone to do it for that time period?
And by we, you mean me?
Like Surfrow or something?
Well, before you leave. I mean, if you want me to hire someone, that's sure.
Sure.
Is that a possibility?
It's a possibility to hire somebody. The last time we tried to hire somebody, we couldn't find anybody that wanted to work. So I suppose if you find a company, I don't know that Surfrow is more.
No, that's more water damage, yeah.
They have more restoration of.
They clean. They clean my house when I filled it with smoke.
Right, they do that kind of cleaning.
Right.
They did a great job.
They don't do, I don't think they do normal cleaning, so.
I don't think they do pandemic cleaning.
There seems to be a lot more of this pandemic cleaning going on, though. I would, I'd be surprised if there's not some cleaning agencies that have kind of branched out a little bit.
Would it be, I was going to say, would it be possible to get the custodian over at Bagnell to help us out that week?
So I don't know about Bagnell. We've used Dwight McDonald's on Kevin, who filled in for us in the past. I don't know, I mean, the school right now is like all gung-ho with cleaning all day, so I don't know that they'd be available, or he'd be available during the day to clean.
Whatever options we can come up with in the next week, we have.
Again, by we, you mean me?
I mean, you, and then you can.
You mean, I need to make this priority in the next eight days?
Or if you want me to do something, I'll, in my spare time, I'll do what I can.
I can call around, too.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
Well, it's either that or, again, the pines has to be closed, because we, we need to be able to have the ability to have it cleaned every day. Here, there are wipes and sprays that every employee cleans after they use it, so even if Steve isn't around.
What does it take to clean the bathrooms at the pines?
Well, what do you mean, what does it take? Everything has to be sterilized, disinfected.
Can I go in there with a fire hose and just blast it, or do I have to go in there with gloves and mask and actually go down and clean everything?
It has to be physically cleaned. Under the COVID, it has to be at least once a day.
Well, I might be able to help doing that, if I'm, if I'm around. August 7, August 17.
Week of August 17.
A whole week.
Might not be around. But I might be able to fill in a couple of days.
I'll fill in for a couple of days.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if we can't find anybody to, to hire someone to do it, I think we can maybe fill in a couple of days.
COVID cleaning crew.
I mean, I'm going to add that to my resume, that I'm.
So your next meeting is August 17, so do you want me to just be in touch with you all next week and say, hey?
Yes, yeah.
Sign up for the days you want to clean?
Yeah, I mean.
Or did we find a service?
Yeah.
We can leave a key at the bat, at the police station.
Yeah, I mean, whatever. If I have to go down there a day, maybe Jason can swap off days and.
Because I can ask the police.
Put the coin for the fifth day.
I can ask the police to unlock the building in the morning. They lock it at night for us, so they can open it, but it's a matter of, we're required to have it cleaned.
Well, good to know that I can volunteer to clean toilets and nothing else.
That was the week of August?
17.
Yeah, so if you can let us know. We got another meeting at 6, so we got to move this along. Selectment times and reports, I am going to go first. This is Denise's last meeting with us. I wanted to say that for the five and a half years that I've been on this board, this is nothing.
Don't make me cry.
This is nothing like I thought it would be. This is much more difficult, there's much more involved in this position. There's so much that I don't know, that I still don't know, and she has made this a lot easier to learn and a lot easier to navigate. For me, and I'm sure for the rotation of the board, I don't know how we're going to replace you. I don't know that we're ever going to get to that point that we have the work ethic and the knowledge of, of everything that you conveyed to us, or at least to me, over the last five and a half years. I'm still not happy that you're leaving, but I wanted to say thank you for everything you've done, not only for Groveland, but for this board. Oh, come on. For this board and for me personally, because again, five and a half years of doing this, and it's not been easy, but having you in the background, kind of guiding us, has made it manageable.
I want to go along that same line. I think my, my relationship with Denise has gone a little longer, because I sat on the finance committee and the capital improvement committee for four years before I was elected Selectman, and I want to say that, over the time, Denise has become much more than just the town manager, the town finance director. To me, she's become a mentor, a friend, an ally, a colleague, and someone that I am genuinely going to miss. I wish I had the words to really express my gratitude for everything she's done, not only for the town, but for me personally and my, and my growth as a Selectman. I owe her a lot. I don't think I'll ever be able to repay that. You've given me more than you'll ever know, and I can only wish you the.
Can I get you some tissues or something over there?
I'm going to need some tissues in a minute, too.
First, you got a COVID spray and then.
Are they in that drawer, Jason?
They are.
I've said all along, you're the one of the best hires this town has ever made, and I'll stand to that to my grave. What you've done over the last six years has been nothing short of exceptional. When I first came to this board, the audit report took me three days to read through. days to read through. Now I can get through it in two minutes.
Two minutes.
So I wish you the best of luck in your new endeavors, but I gotta warn you, the two golf courses in Stowe are in terrible position, so that means the residents are gonna revolt, businesses are gonna go down, and in two weeks, you're gonna be out of a job, because they're gonna have no money. And you know what? In three weeks, we'll take you back. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we got a couple of minutes. Anybody want to add anything under selectman time?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a couple of things. Congratulations, or well done, should go out to the fire department, the police department, the highway, electric company for their handling of the storm about 10 days ago on a Thursday. And nothing but praise for all four, all four departments. They did a great job. They did a good job in cleaning up. I know that they, some of them come in on a, on a Friday, or Friday morning, cleaned up. They did a great job. A lot of comments about the great job that they did, and nothing, nothing negative.
I agree. That was outstanding work. All right, it's outstanding work by everybody.
I was actually witness it.
Yeah, I do, too. Just, maybe we could get a letter out, a note out to the electric company, just curiosity-wise. How much have we saved when we, since we went to the LED streetlights? It's gotta be pretty close to nine months or so that we've changed over, so I'd just be interested to see. I know, I think they projected quite a savings. I just wonder if they have a handle on what that saved us.
All set?
Yeah.
I just want to thank Denise for the very short time that I've been here and pride to be in here, that she's been a big help, and to remind her that I probably won't be going away anytime soon, which I already expressed to her earlier.
Kathy, anything quickly?
Yeah, just again, thank you to Denise. It's, I think women working in a municipal environment work twice as hard. She worked four times as hard. And I remember meeting her when I'm on the finance board, and I'm thinking, who is this woman? And then I came to realize, wow, she is something else. And I guess we will always miss you. You will not be replaced, because you're one of a kind, but you've put us in a really good place, so thank you so very much. I'm sure a lot of residents in town feel the same way. Thank you.
Stowe is getting somebody good. So can we get a motion to adjourn at 6 o'clock?
Motion to adjourn at 5, 6 o'clock.
Actually, may I say, can you make a motion to enter executive session and adjourn in executive session?
Motion to enter executive session.
I'll second that.
You got a roll call, right?
Ed?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Can I use?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, I gotta stand. Denise, you know it's supposed to cry.